Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Zoning appeals. I'm going to be serving as chair of tonight's meeting and before we begin, we'd like to introduce those that are attending with us tonight. Here in the chambers, I have Commissioner Duane Beth and Commissioner Aaron Ward and joining us online are Commissioners Jim Ernst, Commissioner Jake Miller will be here in just a few minutes, Commissioner Mark Muller and Commissioner Joseph Straws. We also have with us tonight, Michael Farley with Unified Government Legal Counsel along with staff from the Unified Government Planning and Urban Design Department Rodney Lucas, Byron Toy, Mari Monheal, Ocedes Espinosa and Rose Morris who will be announcing the cases this evening. So I'm going to turn it over to Rose and she'll give you the format for tonight's meeting.
Hello, we would like to welcome those participating in the meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are participating remotely by Zoom or present in the Commission Chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you're adjoining by Zoom, please make sure that you have an appropriate background. For those members of the public attending virtually this evening, please use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an application. If you are present in the Commission Chamber, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when your application is called. After the chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address and make your comments. If you're having issues getting into the Zoom meeting, please see the Planning and Urban Design website on ycoKCK.org. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting and anyone who fails to act properly may be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. First, the applicant will be given 15 minutes to make an opening statement and explain their proposal, which includes the applicant, consultants and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the board will then address any questions that they have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then, those in opposition will be recognized and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Each member of the public will be given five minutes to explain their opinions and time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker's time may be extended in five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the board. The chairman will then ask for a show of hands for people who are support or in opposition who do not wish to speak. Then, the applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and then the public will only be allowed to address the board if a question is directed towards them. Then, the board will discuss an application and make their decision with a brief statement of the reason of the motion preceding the making of the motion. Motions to approve shall include the staff conditions unless otherwise stated in the motions. We'll go to our first case, Boza 2025-022 Linda Houston Foundation is a variance for parking for a quilt museum and event space at 1133 North 94th Street and 9250 State Avenue in conjunction with CoZ 2025-019. Does anyone on the board have any context to disclose on this application?
No. And Ms. Houston, are you in the audience? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Aaron March. I'm an attorney with the Ralphs Fred's Law Firm here tonight on behalf of the Linda Houston Foundation. And Linda Houston is with me in the audience. She is the sponsor and the developer of what we hope will be the Quilt Museum of Kansas. Online with us, we have our project architect and our project engineer should you have any questions about design or engineering, either on this case or on the following case when you sit as planning commission. We have a short PowerPoint presentation to explain our request. Next slide, please. Next, go back one if you would. The project is located at 9300 State Avenue and as I mentioned, the proposed use is the Kansas City Quilt Museum. Staff has already indicated the companion case, which will allow for rezoning of the property to CP1. We are here tonight requesting a variance of 58 parking spaces or under your authority as board members, planning commission members when the use isn't called out simply to approve us for 102 parking spaces for our intended use. Excuse me, next slide. The property is located at the northeast corner of State Avenue and 94th, next to the Home Field location across the street from Stitch Apartments, catty corner from the Arch Diocese. Next slide, please. This is a view looking to the east, directly, more or less directly east on State Avenue and 94th. This is the corner that we don't own. It's the location of the former Frontier Steakhouse. Our property is to the east and also to the north of this, wrapping around the corner. Next slide, please. This is a view canting more towards the southeast looking northwards on 94th Street at State Avenue to give you a little bit of perspective. It's just a heavily wooded, overgrown site right now. Next slide. This is the view looking due east from the driveway of the Stitch Apartments into our site where the museum and parking will be and behind it is the Home Field facility. Next slide. This is our site plan. It's a 3.3 and a half acre site. We're proposing a 40,000 square foot, excuse me, 40,000 square foot building and asking for 102 parking spaces. You can see the lightly outlined building at the upper left-hand corner. That's the building. It's a two-story building and the parking and driveways are to the right. You'll note at State Avenue, at the bottom right-hand corner, we have a new driveway and we are proposing ultimately, and we have an agreement with the Home Field owners who own the corner, to allow them access through this driveway into their site. So it's a shared driveway, just to make it easier for flow of traffic. And our driveway on the north lines up with the existing driveway of the Stitch Apartments. Next slide, please. So the proposed operations, this is a museum. It's not a retail facility, but it falls under CP1. Our operation will be open from nine to five, seven days a week. We'll have nine full-time employees and four part-time employees. There's no food and beverage other than bottled water that'll be available in the gift shop. There's no liquor sold on premises. The only time that there might be alcohol on premises will be if we, when we have our private events, which until we get our special use permit approved down the road will be limited to just a handful of those, two to four, excuse me, maximum of four events per year. Those special events won't take place when the museum is open. So you'll never have the museum open and the parking load of the events, they'll be independent. The museum will close and the events will take place after that. Next slide, please. More relevant to the planning commission hearing, but just so you know what we're going to build, this is the east elevation, the main entrance of the facility. The main entrance faces to the east. Next slide. This is the west elevation, visible from 94th Street. Next slide. And then the north and south elevations. Next slide. It's important to understand what takes place in the quilt museum, why we don't have to satisfy a parking load for the full 40,000 square feet. And that's because of the first floor, the 28,000 square foot first floor, only 19,000 of that is actually generate parking. You have to store the art someplace. You have to prepare the art, the quilt, someplace. That's not where the general public is going to go. It's truly way back of the house space, not really driving a parking demand. Next slide, please. On the second floor, which is only a half a floor, 12,000 square feet, the back of it is where the quilts are hanging. So it's a two-story area on the west side for hanging. So of the 12,000 square feet on the second floor, we only have, again, 6,000 of that is generating parking. The rest of it is, again, for the storage of materials and not open to the general public. Next slide, please. So all in all, we have 25,000 square feet of space that might generate a parking demand if this was a CP1 use and that would require 100 parking spaces, four spaces per thousand square feet. We're providing 102 parking spaces and we think that's even more than we'll actually need. Next slide. So with that, we ask that you approve our variance or approve our request for 102 parking spaces for the quilt museum. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for this applicant? Okay, I'm seeing none, so we'll go ahead and open up the public portion of the meeting. Anyone want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or if you're online, just raise your hand, please. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting. We'll go to staff, get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends approval, subject to stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Mr. Ward, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve Boza 2025-022, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Boza Case 2025-022 made for approval by Commissioner Ward. Is there a second, Commissioner Straws?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
All right, we will go to our next case now, which is Boza 2025-023. Mitchell Brown is a variance for incidental wall and digital signs at Children Mercy Park at 1600 Village West Parkway. Does anyone on the board have any context to disclose on this application?
No. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good evening. My name's Mitchell Brown. Address is 1411 West 50th Terrace, Kansas City, Missouri. Project is located at 1600 Village West Parkway, Kansas City, Kansas. Project needs a total of six deviations for the proposed signage mostly related to size and illumination. Children's Mercy Park is located at the heart of Village West area and it's a major shopping and entertainment district for the region. We are excited for the 2026 World Cup events and the opportunity to bring Children's Mercy Park and Village West into the fanfare. The project will have a large LED board above a performance stage and accessory and directional signage around the new entry gates. Children's Mercy Park is a large facility that draws thousands of spectators to the area for sporting and entertainment events. The plaza renovation and variances will enhance that experience by providing consistent and visible directional and identity signage throughout the plaza. It will also help rebrand the plaza area as a destination for music, watch parties and many other uses. Nothing we are proposing is outside the general spirit and intent of the property being located within the entertainment district as a whole. The signage is consistent with the existing stadium and adjacent properties as well. That's it. I would like to acknowledge and thank the planning staff for helping through the process. We agree with the two conditions of approval. And I don't have any visuals since we just heard the specialty use permit and development last month, but that's right up there. Byron's got it. Any questions?
All right, let me find out. Any questions for this applicant? Doesn't look like it, so we'll see if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this case in favor or in opposition. Raise your hand or come forward. Seeing no one, we'll go to staff and get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Byron Toy Planning Department, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve Boza, Boza Case 2025-023, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Okay, motion to approve Boza Case 2025-023 made by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Straws, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Our next case is Boza 2025-024. Katrina Gerber is a variance for a mobile home size and front patio size and parking at 1300 North 59th Street in conjunction with CoZ 2025-020. Does anyone on the board have any context to disclose on this application?
No. Rose, you're going to need to unmute Katrina because you have me down as a panelist.
Yeah, she should be...
Ms. Gerber, we've got you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, start off with your name and address, please.
Okay, sorry about that. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so we are requesting a...
Your name and address, what?
Katrina Gerber. The address is 1001 Metropolitan. I'm with Eden Village of Kansas City. And we are requesting four variances for a project at 1300 North 59th Street. The first is for the size of a mobile home lot. The mobile homes that we are providing on this park are not the typical size. They're much smaller and so we are requesting that that variance be accepted, not to be a 40 by 100 site or lot size. The second that we are requesting is a, the size of the required concrete patio for a mobile home. Currently, these homes have a front porch that we utilize that is 75 square feet, which is less than what's required by code for the 128 square feet, but we also have other common spaces throughout the development. So we're asking that this variance be accepted and that the front porch, front porches be accepted similar to what we have currently at 1001 Metropolitan. The third variance is a request for the private drive. The way our development works, cars are not allowed past the parking area and so we have no vehicle access except for fire and police past that. And we're asking that the drive requirement be reduced by four feet, which is currently what we have at our property at 1001 Metropolitan also. And then the last variance that we're requesting is for parking. The requirement for parking is, I believe, 43 spaces. We currently have 28. We're requesting that this be approved. The majority of our residents don't have vehicles. Currently at 1001 Metropolitan, we have 22 homes there. We're providing 30 at this new site and at 1001 Metropolitan, we only have 10 parking spaces. So we're greatly increasing that as is and feel that this is more than sufficient for what our, for what we need for our residents. And so we're asking that those four variances be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand or come forward. Seeing no one, we'll go to staff and get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends approval, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report.
All right, one motion will cover it all?
Yes.
All right. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward.
I make a move, I make a motion to approve Boza Case 2025-024, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion to approve Boza Case 2025-024 made by Commissioner Ward, seconded by Commissioner Ernst, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six to zero.
All right, thank you.
And that is all of our agenda for Boza.
All right, so this will conclude the Board of Zoning Appeals. We'll take a five-minute recess and we'll convene the City Planning Commission. Thank you all.
Meeting one down. Meeting two, next.
We all have the September 8th meeting of the City Planning Commission. I'll be serving as Chair of tonight's meeting. Make a few introductions before we begin. Here in the chambers with me tonight are Commissioners Duane Beth and Aaron Ward. Joining us online are Commissioner Jim Ernst, Jake Miller, Mark Muller, Joseph Strauss, and Mary Beth Schwartz. We also have with us Michael Farley with Unified Government Legal Counsel, along with Unified Governments Planning and Urban Design Department staff Rodney Lucas, Byron Toy, Mari Monheel, Ocedis Espinosa, and Rose Morris, who will be announcing the cases this evening. So with that, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Rose, who will read the opening statement, tell you all how we'll run tonight's meeting, and we'll get things underway.
Welcome everyone to the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom or in person in the Commission chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. If you're joining by Zoom, please make sure you have an appropriate background. For those members of the public attending virtually this evening, please use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an application. If you're present in the Commission chamber, please come to the microphone at the front of the room when your application is called. After the Chairman recognizes you, please state your name and address before you make your comments. If you're having issues getting into the Zoom meeting, please see the Planning and Urban Design website on YKCK.org. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting, and anyone who fails to act properly may be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens which will review each zoning proposal for all change of zones, special use permits, vacations, and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda. The Planning Commission makes their recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make final decisions on Thursday, September 25th, 2025, for final Platts and final plan reviews for tonight. Planning Commission's decision is final, and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. First, the applicant will be given 15 minutes to make an opening statement, explain the proposal, which includes the applicant consultants and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Commission then will then address any questions that they have to the applicant. Then, any persons wishing to speak in favor will be recognized and allowed to do so at that time. Then, those in opposition will be recognized and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Each member of the public will be given five minutes to express their opinions, and time may not be shared between speakers. Speaker's time may be extended at five-minute intervals by a two-thirds majority vote of the Commission. The Chairman will ask for a show of hands of people who are in support and are opposition who do not wish to speak. Then, the applicant will answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed, and the public will only be allowed to address the Commission if a question is directed towards them. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If those in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, that means it's available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@ykocck.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by an applicant, Commission, or other interested parties. The Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00 PM. Also, in respect for those attending's time, it has been approved to move SP 2025-043 Domenico Benesia with Rirold LLC forward on the agenda. The applicants have requested a continuance for 60 days. We will be voting to hold over the application. I will now go to the applicants and hear if they have any further comment.
No, at this time, go ahead and call the case for SP 2025-043. What we're doing, there's been a request to hold over this case for 60 days. So in appreciation of your all's time and in respect to your time, we're moving it up to the top of the agenda so we can dispose with the case so you all don't have to sit here through the entire meeting for our cases that may be held over. So at this time, with the applicant for special use application 2025-043, please come forward. Yes, sir.
Sir, I'm Jason Clum. I'm working with the applicant request for the 60-day holdover.
All right. Are there any questions for the applicant and their request for a 60-day holdover? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the holdover.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner.
Sir, you're not being recognized. Is there?
Commissioner.
No. Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I make a motion to hold over special use permit 2025-043 for the asked for 60 days.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
No second.
Motion is seconded for a 60-day holdover, special use application 2025-043. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Strauss.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Schwartz. Sorry.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries seven to zero.
All right. In the audience, this case will be heard again in 60 days at the November meeting. So there's no need for you to stay for this evening because that's all that will be heard this evening. All right? If you have any questions, you can meet with staff, and they'll be happy to answer your question. But this meeting, this case will not be heard this evening. You can go ahead and meet with staff. Call the next case, please, Rose.
Who's staff?
You can. Right there, the staff is sitting right there in front of you. Go ahead and call the next case. Rose, go ahead. So at this time, we're going to go back to the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the Commission that wants any item on the consent agenda removed for consideration?
Let me read them first.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so the Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda. Items on the consent agenda are final Platts, final plans, special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve, unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, staff, Commission, or other interested parties. The staff recommendation on all items of the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I'll read a list of the items on the consent agenda, and when I have completed the list, the Chairman will ask if there is any request to remove any items. This is your time to raise your hand, be recognized, and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff's recommendation. If you are on the consent agenda or Commission chamber, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and the item you want to remove from the consent agenda. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission's agenda. For each item, I'll ask if any contacts have been made, and members of the Commission will be asked to disclose their contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing party for their consideration in making a final decision on Thursday, September 25th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. I will now read the items on the consent agenda.
Rose, could you please turn the camera on for the chamber?
It's not working tonight.
All right, thank you.
Consideration of the August 11th, 2025, City Planning Commission minutes. SP 2025-050, Joseph Collins, a special use permit renewal for continuation of a drinking establishment and microbrewery at 601 Central Avenue. SP 2025-053, Venca Tezware Chetelawada with Legends Liquors, a special use permit renewal for the continuation of a liquor store at 9801 Parallel Parkway. Plat 2025-024, Chris Doyle, final plat for two commercial lots at 9338 State Avenue, 1133 North 94th Street, and 9250 State Avenue. Plat 2025-027, David Lutz, a final plat for one commercial lot at Harvest Bank at 7908 State Avenue. PR 2025-025, Brian Hosting, is a final plan review for a building addition at Sunder Academy High School at 1610 North 8th Street. PR 2025-026, Grissom Rios, a final plan review for church offices at 1007 Minnesota Avenue. PR 2025-027, Sharon Vallejo, is a final plan review for the addition of a new maintenance facility at the Gate of Heaven Cemetery at 12800 Parallel Parkway. The items that I've read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any of the member of the Commission have any context disclosed on these items?
No. I do want to make an announcement on the case that we just held over. That meeting date will be November 10th. So November 10th will be the next hearing on that case. Thank you. At this time, we'll go ahead, and is anybody in the, on the Commission, want anything removed from the consent agenda? Anyone in the audience want anything removed from the consent agenda for special consideration? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and accept a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. Commissioner Miller.
Move to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, made by Commissioner Miller. Is there a second? Commissioner Strauss, is that a second?
That's a second, yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Strauss.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. The planner, excuse me, the special use applications will move on to the Board of Commissioners' meeting on September 25th at 7:00 PM. The Platts and the final plan reviews will not.
Okay, so all items on the consent agenda are approved now. We will move on to the non-consent agenda. The first item is COZ 2025-019, Linda Houston Foundation, is a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R1 Single Family District to CP1 Planned Limited Business District at 1133 North 94th Street and 9250 State Avenue in conjunction with Boza 2025-022. That was approved earlier this evening. Does anyone have any context to disclose on this application?
No. Yes, sir. Back again.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Aaron March. I'm an attorney with the Rouse Fred's White Cost Law Firm. Here tonight on behalf of the Linda Houston Foundation and Ms. Linda Houston, who's here in the audience, who's the sponsor and the developer of the proposed Quilt Museum, which you heard a little bit about a few minutes ago. With one clarification to condition four, we agree with the staff report of the 36 conditions of approval. I will quickly run through this presentation. You're very familiar now with the location proposed. Next slide. Location hasn't changed. It's still right next door to Home Field and catty across the street from the Stitch Apartments on 94th and State Avenue, more or less. Next slide. Again, a slide looking to the east, the corner of 94th Street, at State Avenue, the former Frontier Steakhouse that we wrap around. Next slide. Looking northeast from the corner of 94th Street at State Avenue. Next slide. This is looking from the front yard of the one house that's on the property that Ms. Houston owns that will be demolished. You're looking to the northwest towards the Stitch Apartments. Next slide. Looking from the entrance of the Stitch Apartments back into our site. Next slide. Looking directly in the driveway of the Stitch Apartments. This will be the location of the main driveway into our site. They match up perfectly, which was something we're proud to have accomplished with our friends at Home Field. Next slide. View from the Stitch Apartments into the site. This is where the development will largely take place. Next slide. On the site plan, you've seen this before, and the only thing I want to call out is the clarification to condition number four. We will extend on 94th Street the sidewalk from our north property line to our south property line. We don't own the corner property where the Frontier Steakhouse was. And to clarify the condition, the terminus of our property will end the sidewalk. When that corner property is developed by whomever near term, they will extend the sidewalk from where we terminated, all the way down to State Avenue. We do have a sidewalk that we will be building within our site that takes you internal to the site down the new eastern driveway. So you will be able to get on a sidewalk to State Avenue directly as a result of our development. Next slide, please. The east facade, main entrance. Next slide. The west facade. Next slide. The north and south facades. Next slide. I won't run through this slide again. You've heard about the operations and when they will take place and the difference between events and the operations of the museum for the general public. Next slide. With that, I thank you very much and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, just want to go back to the stipulation that you had an issue with.
Condition number four, the language is, I think they tried, there was an edit that got half-done. And we would ask that the condition read that we agree to install a sidewalk on our west property line along 94th Street to our south property line, which will allow for a future connection to State Avenue.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for this applicant? Seeing none, we'll open up the public proportional meeting. Anyone who want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition, come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing no one, we'll go to staff and get their comment. And if you could, please address condition number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Byron Toy Planning Department, as the applicant's representative stated, the property line where they are, which is Lot 2 of their development, where the south property line is, where their sidewalk will stop along 94th Street. And then, in and when the future development for Lot 1, which is on the northeast corner, comes in, that sidewalk will continue south and connect to State Avenue. So that's a stipulation that Mr. March was making.
Okay, and you're okay with the?
Yes, we're accepting of that stipulation change.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Warden.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve change of zone application 2025-019 with the change from condition four to read that the sidewalk will run from north to south along the west property line.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve change of zone 2025-019 made by Commissioner Ward with the stipulation regarding condition number four. He made, is that a second? Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Strauss.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, September 25th, 25th, before the Board of Commissioners at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Our next case is COZ 2025-020. Katrina Gerber is a change of zone from RP5 Planned Apartment District to RPM Planned Mobile Home Park District at 1300 North 59th Street in conjunction with Boza 2025-024, which was approved earlier tonight. Does anyone have any context to disclose on this application?
No. Thank you. Ms. Gerber, we've got you queued up, ready to speak again. If you would, again, start off with your name and address and tell us about your project.
Sure. Katrina Gerber with Eden Village of Kansas City, 1001 Metropolitan Avenue in Kansas City, Kansas. We are requesting a change of zoning from RP5 to an RPM to develop this property into 30 small homes for chronically homeless individuals. This will be similar to the project we recently developed at 1001 Metropolitan. This property will be secured and gated with only access to the residents. Everything past the gated area is pedestrian access only, and cars are not allowed past there. As you'll notice, on the plans, we have several areas for community development. Our mission is to basically develop and support a community amongst these people, and that is what this project is intended to do. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you. We'll find out. Any questions for this applicant? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Yes, ma'am. If you would, please give us your name and address.
My name is Valerie Webb. I live at 1325 North 59th Street, and I'm here in support of their development. It's, they have worked with the neighbors, and they're keeping with trying to keep the character of the neighborhood as long, which is fit with the master plan. So we welcome them to our neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to staff and get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Ms. Gerber stated, this is basically Eden Village 2.0, where Eden Village, 10th and Metropolitan, was the first iteration of this project, this type of project. With that, it's been successful, and they got numerous variances for that project. Obviously, here, they got a little bit less variances for this project. That was a little bit larger to accommodate what they're trying to do with the staff recommends approval, subject to conditions outlining the staff.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve change of zone application 2025-020, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve change of zone application 2025-020 made by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second? Commissioner Ernst? You're nodding, so I'm, yes, it's a second. Commissioner Ernst?
I'm sorry, sir. It was meant to be a first because this is a wonderful thing.
Oh, all right.
That was all, that was all I wanted to say, so it didn't matter. And yes, I gladly second it.
All right, I can take it away from Commissioner Ward if you tell me to do so.
No, he's a pretty good guy.
I'm all about pleasing people tonight. I've already not done that, so I'm trying to make up for lost ground.
Careful.
All right, we'll go with what we've got. All right, it's been moved and seconded for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Strauss.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. This great project will be heard once again on September 25th at 7:00 PM before the Board of Commissioners. Good luck to you all.
The next application is COZ 2025-021, PMG Asset Services LLC, is a change of zone from AG Agricultural District to CP2 Planned General Business District for Hollywood Casino Hotel at 10701 State Avenue and 501 Speedway Boulevard in conjunction with plat 2025-026, a preliminary plat for one commercial lot. Does anyone have any context to disclose on this application?
No. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Aaron March. I'm an attorney with the Rouse Fred's White Cost Law Firm. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant, KC Hotel 1 LLC. We are in the audience. With me tonight is Mr. Larry Abou, who is the chief executive officer of the developer, the proposed developer, the Prime Group. Lanchita, also with the Prime Group, is in charge of land entitlements. Ms. Linda Garvey is the project manager for the casino with Penn Entertainment, one of the partners in the project. Mr. Jeff Berger with NASCAR Real Estate is also in attendance. They are one of the other partners in the project. So you have. So you have people with concerted interest in what's going on out there, being involved in this development. And Mr. Phil Gibbs is the civil engineer, Phil Gibbs Junior is the civil engineer on the project. Should you have any questions of him? I'll let you know right off the bat that we agree with the staff report and the thirty three conditions that are part of that recommendation for approval. Next slide, please. We're here tonight asking you to rezone a small portion of this development side from AG Agricultural to CP two planned general business and approve the preliminary development plan and approve the preliminary plat so we can build a first class hotel with a hundred and forty rooms and also a destination restaurant. And no, we do not yet have a tenant for that destination restaurant. Next slide, please. The property, much of the property is already zoned CP two. That's the area circled in red. The existing AG zoning that were is the small corner in the upper, the middle left hand corner of the slide outlined in red. So this rezoning would be consistent with the adjacent zoning to the east. Next slide, please. We are looking at building a hotel that will connect to the existing casino. What is now a parking lot would be where this hotel will be built. You're looking to the northeast next slide. We're canted around a little bit more to the left to show you more of the parking lot that'll disappear when we build the hotel next slide. And finally, we're looking straight on north where the hotel will be built next slide. And this is one of the views that if you are unlucky enough to be at one of the lower rooms of the hotel, you'll be able to see into the Speedway complex to the north next slide. This is the site plan you can see outlined in that lighter orange color, the hotel and the connection to to the casino. We're also proposing a new, more formal entryway, which is the circle drive where you'll be able to drop people off, not only at the hotel, but also at the casino and then work your way up out. The upper left hand corner is the parking dedicated to the hotel. Next slide, please. Two hundred sixty five parking spaces are going to be provided, a hundred and fifty three are dedicated parking spaces, more than enough by code to meet the requirements of the hotel. And we have a hundred and twenty parking spaces belonging to the partners that are the sponsors of the hotel should we need additional parking. Next slide, please. This is a rendering of the hotel. You're looking from above towards the northeast. The casino would be on the right, and you can see the pedestrian connection and the new significant, more formal driveway and drop offs for the casino and the hotel. Next slide, please. This is a view at ground level showing the green space. This, we know that one of the questions we got at the neighborhood meeting was, will it be pedestrian friendly? And had we had this slide, we would have been able to show that, yes, it will definitely be pedestrian friendly. Next slide, please. So with that, Mr. Chairman, be happy to answer any questions that you or any member of the planning commission has. Thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? So what you're telling us is it was worth the wait. It's going to be worth the wait, right? All right. Sounds good. Any questions? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll now go to staff, get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Byron Toy Planning Department. This petition will come back as a final plan and final plat at a later date when they choose to apply. So this is the first step with their entitlement with that staff recommends approval, sub to the conditions outlined in the staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Anyone? Commissioner Straw, well, Commissioner Ernst has two. He wants the second because Commissioner Straw is.
I move to approve COZ two zero two five dash zero two one according to staff stipulations and all of the verbiage in the document.
Thank you. Motion to approve changes on application twenty twenty five dash zero twenty one made by Commissioner Straw, seconded by Commissioner Ernst, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. This will be heard once again September twenty fifth at seven P M before the Board of Commissioners. Happy to have you all.
Oh, yeah, we need the plat too.
Oh, sorry, we got one more. We got a plat we got to approve. Is there a motion to approve the plat? Commissioner? Commissioner Schwartz.
I make a motion to approve plat two zero two five dash zero two six, subject to all staff stipulations.
Thank you. Motion to approve plat twenty twenty five dash zero two six made by Commissioner Schwartz, seconded by? Seconded by Commissioner Beth. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, now we'll move on to the special use permit applications. The first application is SP twenty twenty five dash zero four one Vivech Patel is a special use permit, temporary use of land for commercial purposes for a storage container at eighteen oh five north one hundred and tenth street. Does anyone have any context to disclose on this application?
No. Mr. Patel, are you in the audience? Mr. Patel. Okay, I don't see the applicant. Let's go ahead and just push this one to the end of the agenda, which is coming up soon. And we'll see if they show up.
Okay. The next case is SP twenty twenty five dash zero five two Denise Tyler, a special use permit for a short term rental at sixty three twenty seven Roland Avenue. Does anyone have any context to disclose on this application?
No. Ms. Tyler, okay, name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Denise Tyler representing Room by Room Housing Solution for address six three two seven Roland Avenue. So thank you for having me tonight. Basically, this is for a special permit use for short term rental. We have been a super host with Airbnb for over five years now with over two hundred reviews. This is a short term rental that we are targeting seven, minimum stay of seven days or more and a maximum of only six guests. We have pretty much over the five years mastered how to put rules and processes in place so that they aren't, you know, the the problem type short term rentals. And again, our target is not weekend stays. It'll be seven days or more. The, of course, no, no parties or events will be allowed and maximum two cars allowed, which will all be driveway parking. There will also be quiet hours and other things in place so that it does not disturb the neighborhood.
All right, anything else?
No, not unless you guys have any.
No, you're saying all the right things so far. Let's not jinx you.
Okay.
All right. Any questions for this applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to the case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or if you're online, raise your hand. Seeing no one, so we'll go to staff and we'll get their comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, three bedroom, two bath, a non owner occupied, therefore recommended for for one year. Staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Ernst.
Has the driveway issue been settled?
What did he say?
Driveway issue.
Commissioner Ernst, Byron Toy Planning Department, they'll want you to fill that condition of approval of making driveway or that driveway complying with their public works.
Fair enough.
All right.
Which I don't really know what that is. It hasn't been revealed to me what the issue is, but I'll be able to work it out.
Okay, there we go. Let's not trip. We're almost there. There we go.
Gotcha.
Okay, just jump over that little, but let's just keep going. All right, any further questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion when ready. Commissioner Schwartz.
I make a motion to approve special use permit SP twenty twenty five. Hold on, it just got deleted to me. Five zero five two, subject to staff stipulations for approval.
Thank you. Sorry, motion to approve special use application twenty twenty five dash zero five two made by Commissioner Schwartz, seconded by Commissioner Straw, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Yeah, motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. This will be heard once again September twenty fifth before the Board of Commissioners at seven P M. Thank you.
Our next case is PR twenty twenty five dash zero zero one Lindsay Gates with Gates Dance and Gym Studio is a preliminary and final planned review to construct a new dance studio in gym at sixty two hundred state avenue. Does anyone have any context to disclose on this application?
No.
Great.
Thank you. Go ahead and give us your name and app, or sorry, name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Gates. The address of the location is sixty two hundred state avenue, Kansas City, Kansas.
Okay, it's my understanding you're here tonight to request a holdover?
Yes.
Okay, and how long, how much time do you need?
Billy, he should be on. He's my GE, my general contractor.
I'm sorry, what?
I have some, let me, I had someone on Zoom who needed to click in to answer that question, so I'm not sure how how long the holdover needs to be.
Who's the person on the holdover?
Billy.
Billy.
Yeah.
Hello, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Billy Gilreth. I'm the general contractor for Ms. Gates and the dance studio. The reason we're requesting a holdover is because we're dealing with issues with the landscape design, the landscape architecture that we were dealing with. I guess the guy got sick or something, so they kind of put us on a back burner. So we've been waiting on that. But I think those are, I think that's one of the last remaining items we have to have resolved prior to us getting submission for a crit for complete approval.
Okay, so how much time do you need?
I'd say about thirty days, I think, would be enough time.
You sure?
Absolutely. Unless you want to offer a sixty and if we get it in thirty, that's great, too.
Let's go for sixty, and if you want to come back in thirty, we can do that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. So the request is for a sixty day holdover. All right, thank you. Any questions for the?
I'm sorry. Chairman, if they ask for a sixty day holdover, they can't come back in thirty because it's going to throw off the the publication.
Oh, you're correct.
Yep. We need to know now what time they're.
All right, is thirty or sixty?
We'll take thirty.
You'll take thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, you got a deal. All right, the request is for thirty days. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm sorry.
With related to thirty sixty, the reason why I said sixty is because they need to file for an application related to a plat for vacation to vacate right of way along state avenue. Because they didn't have to file most recently, this most recent date, October, they'll need sixty days to file an application to vacate right of way along state avenue because the building currently sits bisecting that right of way that you see on the screen right now. The building sits right kind of in the middle of that red line. So therefore, in order to place that building, they need to vacate some right of way.
So we're going to need sixty days.
You will need sixty.
All right, so you're going to need sixty days. All right, so the request is for thirty, but the recommendation from staff is for sixty in order to get everything in compliance, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, so deal or no deal? We're going to go with sixty. Okay, is there a motion? Staff or legal, you're okay?
Yep, sixty is fine.
Okay.
But again, it's a three quarters affirmative vote for that holdover since they're asking for it today.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. Is there a motion? Commissioner Straw.
I move to hold over PR two zero two five dash zero zero one for sixty days.
All right, motion to hold over case PR twenty twenty five dash zero zero one for sixty days made by Commissioner Straw. Is that a second Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Straws.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Beth.
Aye.
Ernst.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries seven to zero.
All right, thank you. We'll see you in sixty days. That takes us back to our one case, correct?
Yeah, SP twenty twenty five dash zero four one Vivech Patel.
Yes, Mr. Patel, are you in the audience? All right, Byron, do you want to present on this?
Yeah, no problem. Byron Toy Planning Department, the applicant wants to have two shipping containers on the east side of the building here, as you can see on the screen, as far as where my cursor is moving, which faces towards the KC Monarch Stadium. Currently, he was cited back in March for having these contain, these containers on the property. So we recommend approval for two years max since it's a temporary use of land for commercial purposes. The only time we can give him is two years. There's no extensions for that. If you want to make it shorter, you have the ability to do so, but we're recommending two years and then he has to remove them from the property permanently and find an alternate location for them to be stored or store whatever he's storing inside the building.
All right, and that two years, does that start from the time it's approved or does it go, do we retro back to March since they've had it?
It starts from when the special use ordinance is published.
All right. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Ernst.
It's been there a lot longer than March. It's been there when I went to the game last year at the Monarchs.
I believe you're correct in that.
I I don't have any huge objection to it, but him not showing up and we don't have the normal information in the report about why they want it, et cetera. I'd prefer to hold it over if anybody else agrees with me, not that we need more for